This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Whether we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
All right, we're going to call a meeting to order. Before we adopt the agenda, we need to amend the agenda and add item G3, special meeting for audits. Set a special meeting, sorry. So with having that amended, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Kaylin, second by Jill, all those in favor? And that passes six to zero. You will join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So first by Troy.
Second.
Second by Darren, all those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Next up is our recognition, Dr. Bulling.
But please, the board, we'd like to recognize our classified employee of the month. This month, Ms. Tina Stoy, middle school admin assistant, was nominated and being recognized by her administrative team at the middle school. Tina does an excellent job with all things attendance. She has an excellent attendance record along with keeping our school records accurate. She multitasks tasks all things the minute she arrives in the building, helping staff, parents, and students get started on their day. Her dedication and commitment is truly exemplary. She adheres to her work schedule and contributes greatly to our team's productivity and efficiency. She helps all staff and parents keep track of attendance, and we are very thankful for all that she does for our school. So congratulations to Stoy.
Next up is Boy Soccer.
First off, I'd like to thank the board for inviting our teams to come to the board meeting tonight and be recognized. We've had some amazing seasons in the fall sports, and now we're in the winter. I'd like to start with Boy Soccer. I'm just going to be a second. I gotta brag on this team a little bit. I've been doing this job for thirteen, fourteen years now. Making a Final Four is a huge deal in high school athletics. Making one Final Four is a huge deal. You have to be really, really good, and you have to make sure that the right guys don't get hurt or bad luck. There's just so much that goes into it. Tonight, we're going to recognize the Excelsior Springs soccer team for making their third consecutive Final Four in a row. So with that being said, I would like Zach to come up and, Coach, come up and introduce your players and maybe just give us a quick description of your journey.
Well, do you guys hear me? Okay, well, first off, thank you guys for inviting us down here. We're very lucky and feel very fortunate to have kind of made this a routine thing over the last couple of years. You know, I think the big thing that I want to convey and that these guys do the stuff that you don't see is that all of this comes with extreme hard work. It's the stuff, the small habits, the routines that they develop in the offseason together as a group that are repeated consistently over a period of time that result in what these guys have been able to accomplish. And, you know, like Coach Marshall said, it's very difficult to get to one, let alone three. And if you talk to this group of kids, they want to go back again. And I think that's the most important thing is that when you talk to other teachers or coaches or people that are around the weight room and any guys or coaches that are training these guys, they're the ones that are leading the effort. They're the ones that are leading the mentality in the weight room or in fitness workouts. So, you know, really, we preach it a lot, but it is what you put into it, you get out of it. And these guys do a really good job of that. So I'm pleased that, you know, the results have been what they've been. You know, the goal of this program since I took over has always been to be a fast, strong, tough, disciplined team that consistently competes for championships. And we had a conversation after the fourth place or the third place game because there's a lot of disappointment, and obviously rightfully so. You go down there with bigger goals than what we came home with. But I think the perspective on what success looks like for this team changed, and it changed for the better, right? The expectation was to go to the Final Four and do well. But the championships we were talking about nine years ago were district championships. And so for that to change says a lot about this group and that mentality. So we wanted to make sure that we refocus. If our goal was to win state championships every year, we would be unsuccessful many years. And so, you know, we want to refocus, and we wanted to make sure that our goal continues to be district championships. And when we get there and we do those things, we want to reevaluate and look forward to what might be next. You know, the last thing I'll say about this group is it was a really special group because we weren't the team that we were at the end at the beginning. And you could say that about many teams. But the thing that made this group special was that many of these players played roles, were role players on the first two teams. And I heard a quote the other day that talked about, you know, excelling at the role that you have and then while you're preparing for the role that you want. And these guys did that. I mean, tremendous team players in year one and year two. Some of them got to experience both of them, lucky then. But they excelled at the role that they were in currently, and then they were preparing for what was next. So for them to get that opportunity this year made that opportunity more special for us as a coaching staff to see those guys excel. So I know that we've taken a little break, but we're going to get back right to it and, you know, continue to set forth and to accomplish our goals. But I want to thank the board, thank my staff, and thank the players for all the work they put in and have another successful year. So, thank you, guys.
All right, next up is the high school production of.
Well, both of these teams or groups that we're going to recognize tonight, one thing they have in common is that their leaders have created this culture of expectation. And expectation is definitely a privilege. They both do a great job of setting examples and telling kids exactly what they're looking for in order to be successful. And, you know, Coach talks about roles. I guess it just makes sense to have Mr. Haney come up and talk about roles. So with Soon School, the musical, we're going to have Mr. Haney come on up and talk a little bit about your production.
Do you mind if I have some of the kids up?
Absolutely.
Do you want to come out and stand behind me? That's the expectation.
You're also afraid to be onstage. I mean, what's the problem here?
They're not. The thing, I'll just speak briefly so that they have time to speak to you. First, I too would like to thank you. It's only taken me eleven years to come here. You invite me every year. It's not you, it's me. So I do thank you. I think I was strong-armed by Eric Marshall. He strong-armed me, and so I'm here, and so I appreciate that very much. The thing I learned over, this is the twenty-fourth year of doing this, eleventh year here, is I realized the limits of my talent, and so what I do, I surround myself by people who are more talented than I am, and then I just sit there and take your compliments. But I don't take it from them because these people are amazing. I worked with Tim Harland this year. I had the amazing honors work with Jonathan West for the first time, who is a hysterically funny person. And I think I'm funny, but he's not me. And then, of course, I had Julia Hubert and Xavier Roelis over there assisting me too. And so with that group, it's almost impossible not to be successful. And then I also have the student body at Excelsior. There's one hundred and forty-seven students that are involved in this musical. It's not just the cast. There's a huge amount of students that work every day on it. I had the pleasure of asking Dr. Everett last year about adding a class to the curriculum. And of course, Dr. Miller, listening to that process and allowing some time for it. And so the musical theater class has helped immensely, I think, in building the quality. And so those two leaders are fantastic. And then, of course, this year, we had the incredible gift of Dr. Wickham, who is incredibly patient and listens intently. And so I thank her too because it just doesn't happen without leadership. And I think everything goes back to leadership. I'll believe that until I finally say I'm done with my career. So I would like, if you don't mind, because they are articulate. They tend to like to have a character to hide behind. But I'll start with Lydia. Lydia is a gift because not only, she wasn't onstage, but what she did, she choreographed the musical, but then she stage managed. And a stage manager to work with me is a challenge because I am not the easiest human on the face of the earth. But she is so complimentary toward my energy. And so I thank her very much. She made this possible. And so would you like to speak first and then introduce your friends?
Hi, can everybody hear me? Yes, okay, awesome. So the first point I wanted to bring up tonight is the fact that theater helps us with real-world skills. So without good collaboration and, you know, positive communication, we never could put on shows like we do, like never. My second point is that I was able to work with not only amazing high schoolers and amazing teachers, but also middle schoolers and elementary schoolers were involved in this production. And like, we had a cast of over forty people, which was amazing. And then my last point is, sorry, I prepared this, I promise. Mr. Haney threw me off. What was I going to say? What was I going to say?
I don't know.
Okay. Wait one second. I'll let somebody else talk first. M. Rice, do you want to talk? This is M. Rice, AKA The Cat in the Hat. Amazing human, go ahead.
Okay, a lot of you know me, and this might surprise you, but in real life, I'm not very outgoing. So on the stage, I'm able to like be a character, and that is a really great outlet for me. And without the amazing support system that we have at the high school in the fine arts department, I wouldn't be able to do that. And I think I would be in a very different place, like just in my life, if I didn't have theater. Thank you all.
Okay. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the people who are involved in this, who know more than us and who have been doing this for a long time. So people like Mr. Jeff Haney over here, Mr. Harland, Mr. West, Julia, Xavier, all the people who make things happen that you as an audience can't see, that put everything together and put people together, put the cast together, work the lights, work the sound. There's so much, like Mr. Haney says, there's as much of a show going on behind the stage than there is on the stage. So I think it is... I think it's amazing how all that works and how all that is put together. And yeah, I'd like to thank the rest of the cast, all the high schoolers, all the elementary schoolers who were, elementary schoolers and middle schoolers were so brave as to come up and audition for something like that. That's a hard thing to do. Think about when you're in elementary school and, you know, if you would have gotten an opportunity like this, it probably would have like, you would have got some jitters, at least. But so I think that's really cool that they came out and that they were brave enough to do something like that. Thank you.
Cutting back up through before I forget it again. So my third point, which I think is the most important point, so I don't know how I forgot it, is that being involved in extracurriculars like theater and like soccer, it not only improves students' grades, but also their attendance. I know that personally, being involved in theater has helped me actually want to come to school and want good attendance, and I know that a lot of other people feel that way too. So yeah, I don't know how I forgot that point, but there's that good point. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? My name is Christian Canales. I've been in the theater department since my sophomore year of high school, and I'm currently a senior at the high school. And theater's just been so fun. I love seeing all of the cast members like work together to create this kind of beautiful show. And I also just enjoy it. I don't remember what I was going to say. I had a speech prepared as well. But yeah, I just think theater is just a really fun thing.
Hi, I played JoJo in the musical at the time, and before this, I was in a show as well. But I didn't have as big of a role as I did in this one. But not only did I have a role that I feel like I could connect to, I also helped design the set, I painted a few things backstage, and I helped tear it down as well when it was set. And it was really sad to see it go away, but it also was very, very great to be a part of. And personally, I learned and I grew from that, and it was pretty great to be there.
Thank you, guys. This is why you don't like theater, because it goes on and on.
Sure have the fun video to watch. You guys are missing out. Rolling out on us.
There is a quiz on this one.
Welcome to the December edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in Cooperation with Massa and Moensville. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Ruth Johnson got the conference off to a great start during the first general session. During her remarks, she shared the story of her trip.
Not really. No, not really.
...of journey through public education and how school board members make journeys like hers possible.
Each of you, as passionate members of your local school boards, holds a key to that transformation for your students. Your belief in their potential, regardless of their background, can change the course of their entire lives. You possess the ability to pave the way for brighter futures, offering hope and opportunities where none seem to exist. Education is the great equalizer, breaking down the walls that social and economic hardships build. It provides a platform for dreams to flourish, talents to be nurtured, and potentials to be realized. As members of the school board, we are the gatekeepers of this transformative power, able to shape educational policies and programs that level the playing field and other genuine opportunities for all.
ABC News veteran and creator and host of What Would You Do?, John Quinones, was the keynote speaker for the second general session of the conference. His presentation detailed his odds-defying journey and celebrated the life-changing power of education.
Yes, today, I wouldn't be the man I am today had it not been for the education I received in public school and then in college at a time when all the odds were stacked against me. And then along came my first hero besides my mother and father, and it was my English teacher, my English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, in tenth grade at Brackenridge High School. When everyone else had told me, you're not college material. You know, no one in your family has ever gone to college. You speak with a funny accent. You don't have any money. Your grades aren't all that great. When those teachers, you know, what gives you the audacity, John Quinones, to think you can go to college? When those teachers told me that, my high school English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, did the opposite. She said, Johnny, I love the way you write your essays in English class. I love the way you tell stories. Have you thought about journalism?
Missouri's 2024 Teacher of the Year Greg Kester spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. Kester is a social studies teacher at Petosi High School in the Petosi R3 School District. He said that when people wonder about the status of our state and nation, the answers we are looking for are right in front of us.
The test of a nation's status is the quality of its citizenry. And I have good news. My country is full of good, quality citizens. I'm staring at a group of good, quality people right now, and I can prove it. What do you call a person who runs for an elected office that does not pay? Now, that sounds like a school board member, but at the core, it is really just a quality person. The key attribute to the best quality people is not their patience, not their ability to forgive the eternally unhappy, but their capacity to love and to serve. It is easy to love one's spouse, one's family, one's friend, and one's neighbor. The capacity to love and serve in this instance in which I speak is love for what I refer to as the generalized other, which is much more difficult. The generalized other is the person that you may never meet, the person whose name you will never know, or the kid attending your school district that you will never see. It is this ability to love and serve that is required of elected school board members every day. This love and service is a reflection of people of quality and citizens of virtue. These are the people who run for an office, not to build a resume, not for personal gain, but to serve their neighbor, their community, and the children in their local public school. It is a great thing, this thing we call public service.
In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than seventy concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's delegate assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work throughout the coming year. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for your dedication and the amazing work you've done throughout all of 2023 to ensure all students succeed.
Anything else, Darren? Oh, sir. All right, some may have gotten their one-hour mandatory renewal training. So you'll need to sign up and do that. Pretty simple. It's like four fifteen-minute videos. It's real quick. You don't have it because it's part of your initial training. But once you do it, it'll tell you to print off a, it'll give you a certificate. You can print that off and then give it to the center.
What's that do by?
I don't know when. I don't think it had to.
Before the election.
Yeah.
I saw it was like January first. It's just, I think it has to be done before the next election. So just make sure you get that when you get it. You'll get it from MSBA, can somebody if you remember your sentence. If you get it, make sure you do that. You have to sign up to get your future anything passed.
I feel like he emailed us and reminded us to sign up.
Yeah. They'll send you, they'll send you reminders. But I just wanted to throw that in case you haven't seen it. Uh, no visitors. Moving on to cabinet reports. You got your eight timer? I don't know. Just go first. First up, it looks like Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Um, I don't have anything to present today visually. I know. You take back that eight timer comment now, don't you? So APR data came out yesterday, like at two o'clock or three o'clock. I didn't want to throw together some data and put some comparisons on there. I've known our state data up until this point, but this is when, in January, I'll do all of our comparison data. I've already given you kind of a little bit of a taste of where we were at. It was like last May, so it's been a while. But in the January meeting, I'll be sure to share that with you. In addition to that, I'm looking forward to, we've got, I've got my administrator meeting tomorrow. We're going over some data. And I'm, I'll just do, you're going to have so much data in January. You're just look forward to it because it's, we're going to do a deep dive in data. So get excited. Kenny? Study up. Okay. But I really don't have anything to present to because it just wasn't ready. So I'll bring that to you in January.
Thanks for that update.
You're so welcome. Wasn't it timely?
It was very timely.
We'll make up for it in January.
That's right.
All right, next up is Human Services, Dr. Everett.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share some fun stuff with you. I get the joy of doing a lot of the holiday fun stuff. And when I say I, I don't do it. Kim Curtis is the person who is, she's just, she's amazing at her job and works so hard to get all the resources that she possibly can for our families. And so these numbers are from about a week ago, so I'm sure that they're actually a little higher because Kim never says no when other needs come across her desk. So just from our district alone, we were able to sponsor sixteen families through Adopt a Family. I know like our student council, a lot of the money that they raised at their bingo event went to supporting families. I think they raised about $2,000 just in that initiative alone to support local families. And so that's about fifty children here. Another initiative that we do is Sack It for Santa, and that is for, specifically for teens. And so those are not like full adoptive family initiatives, but each teen gets a bag, winter gear, a gift, and different other supplies. So Kim had twenty-four of those to give to our teenagers. And then we had about twenty-five elementary students that are participating in Shop with the Cop here in town. So that's always really fun, too. So a fun thing for our staff that we're doing, it's a new thing that we've not done before, is just to get between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we're doing a winter wellness bingo for all staff to participate. And so every week, there's a, they can fill out their bingo cards for healthy habits, and there's prizes. And so like, this is the example of the bingo card. But Laney Hurt is leading the wellness committee right now, and so her group has come up with some really great prizes. And then there's a weekly winner, and then at the end, everyone who has a blackout board is also in a drawing for a $200 Amazon gift card. So just a fun way to encourage healthy habits for our staff to end the year strong. It's related from my side.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Next up is Operations, Dr. Bulling.
But please, the board, I'd like to give some updates on operations throughout the district. Quick safety and security and booth service update. So we're working on finalizing the plans for the $200,000 grant. We got to put security film on the entryways and the hallways at cornerstone and entryways on the other elevators, so we'll finalize that. It'll be a start on the. It'll be a start on that at the first of the new year. And then food service, the RFP update. So our big pre-bid meeting is tomorrow, so all companies interested in bidding for our food service for the next five years have to come to that pre-bid meeting. So, uh, that'll be myself and Val will be there, wanting some questions, and really we help them with questions. And then the big thing will, the bid will be due, I think, January 16th. And then we have a group that'll come together and upgrade those and pick the interested companies to come in for, um, the interviews and food presentation. So really some exciting things here. I'm gonna skip that middle slide for now. So it's staff attendance, uh, sitting at about 97%. And then the sub bill rate is 92.9% for our certified staff that need subs, so that's really good. That's in line with or better than most of the other metro, um, area schools. So we're really excited about if we can have a good approved sub in there without having combined classes and it's good for students. Uh, and then the very exciting news, if you look here, building data, so not only, uh, compared to this time last year, all buildings have earned the green and have a higher average daily attendance rate than they have had last year, they have this year. So very exciting news there. And then also, all of their work is paying off to this point, even through many of the sicknesses and illnesses that we've had for semester. The district's 90-90 percentage, which is really what plays into the APR, is 5% higher this year than it was at this point last year. So we're at 79%. We were about 74% last year. And really to put that in the most important data is, that's about 136 kids less that are chronically absent than were last year. That means they're there enough that the important things are doing, the classic learning, um, it can have a positive impact. So we're really excited about those numbers. Uh, sent a big thank you, great job out to the administrators and the attendance committees yesterday, but if you see them, thank them for their hard work. It's never done, so I feel like you're spinning wheels. We're very proud of their work, what they've done so far, and looking forward to see that day off. So, yeah.
Questions?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up is Superintendent.
Hey, it's me. Are we fighting each other for the mouse? There we go. Um, I left this on here. I don't do, I had the opportunity to go today over to Lewis and get an update on the construction of Lewis, and you can use that, that link there. Anybody can go on there and check it out. So I got a chance to walk through the building with the contractors, and it was really amazing. So just a couple of things. If you notice, they put up a plastic screen around the first story of the building. I asked what that was for. It's actually to help pour concrete on the second floor. So what they do is they bring in heaters and they heat it from below, so the heat rises up and keeps the concrete at a temperature that it will cure and not crack. I didn't realize that. I just thought that was kind of an amazing fact, and I was curious why they were putting all that plastic up anyway. But, um, the most exciting things I can tell you is that everything's going better than we'd hoped. So we are currently ahead of schedule and under budget, and as the longer that continues, the longer we have good weather, the fewer things that can pop up. Once we get everything in, tidy up on the outside and our inside, that weather doesn't have an impact anymore. So, uh, let's hope for a nice, dry winter, and we should be great. We're gonna be great in the winter. We're ahead, so. Uh, there'll be some things that pop up, and there'll be some curveballs here and there, but feel really good about it. Um, I had a couple of things I wanted to cover tonight. We've got a chamber lunch tomorrow. I know a couple of you guys have emailed me, so, uh, we've got those seats open. You guys still planning on?
Is that, uh, what time is that?
Noon?
Noon.
Noon tomorrow with the Els.
11:30.
It's 11:30.
I put down noon.
They changed. The elves changed it.
Oh. I have down 11:30. 11:30 works.
11:30.
I'm gonna make a change. Yep, yep, 11:30, there it is. So we've got that going tomorrow, so look forward to that. Uh, why don't I give you an update on some of the financial changes that are currently going on? We've already started the process to come up with a budget for next year. Uh, it's gonna be an interesting year financially for the district because for the first time, we're gonna come off of being old harmless, which we've been since 2005, and now we'll actually be going on the formula. So it's good and bad. I don't know if it's good or bad, but it does create some different opportunities and challenges for us when it comes to, uh, attendance is huge when you're on the formula, uh, from a financing standpoint, uh, but also summer school. So we want as much weighted ADA as we can get, and summer school contributes to that, so we're gonna encourage a very strong summer school, uh, to make sure that we're not just losing money because we're going from one funding mechanism to another. So in a perfect world, we just move over at the same dollar amounts that we're used to, but I don't know. Like, we haven't been on it before, so we're making some guesses. But the first time we'll be on the formula as far as student attendance will be this summer. So that's a big change for us. Because of that, we're gonna pull back on a few things, uh, on our planning, on our capital expenditures, and just maybe kind of see how things play out when it comes to funding. So at the high school, we talked about around $200,000 to stain the brick like Elkhorn and do all that. We can still do all those things, but for right now, it's $200,000. We're just gonna pull back on that. We can live with the way it is for a little bit longer until we know better. Uh, we do have the new scoreboard at the high school football field. That's being installed in, uh, January, coming in January.
It'll ship.
Ship in January.
It's fourth.
So it'll be here pretty soon, uh, so we'll get that all taken care of. Once that's up, we're also talking about something for the, the back of it that faces the school, and then we'll also come back with some small landscaping just to kind of finish that off in there, so it doesn't look so rough. Uh, tennis courts, I know those have been a fun topic over the last couple of months. Uh, gonna change that. I think we're gonna sit and hold tight on that and not go the full bore million-dollar option, and actually go to the opposite end spectrum and just patch it. Just patch it on, it's the least, we have four different options, that's the least expensive option. It's just, it's not gonna buy us but a year or two, and we're still gonna have to take care of this. But again, I'd rather wait and see how our financing looks and what we can do. There's other priorities that I think we could put our money towards now that deal with salaries, benefits, other things going on in there. So we're just gonna do a temporary fix on that for now. Uh, we do plan on moving forward with the middle school, Elkhorn, and, uh, central office parking lots. Uh, that's around $500,000 to redo those parking lots. Uh, and if you notice, that means next year, we would do the high school and early childhood center. Uh, the high school is so large that it goes up to 850,000 when you throw the two of those together, but we try to split them out. Worst-case scenario for funding, if we needed to, we could break out the high school and do one side of it one summer and the other side the next summer, or something like that. We'll figure that out, but those are kind of the big things coming up. So I just wanted to give you an update of some capital expenditure plan on what we were doing moving forward. Did you guys have any questions about any of those? Okay.
I have a question, sir. Go ahead. Were any of those already board-approved items that we were gonna push forward?
No.
The score was approved.
Yeah, the score was approved, but I didn't know the other ones. I thought, I thought we'd go along with the evidence.
My last comment.
The rest were just, you know, to move forward, just generous.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah. Any questions?
I think it's good just to have these things come up and we talk about it as they evolve, so that way it doesn't surprise Jerry or not curious. Hey, why isn't something so? So I think the more information, the better, and as we learn more. And maybe we have a good financial year, and if it comes in better than we thought, then we go back to our list and say, hey, I think we can do a couple of these things. That's when we'll have go-to votes and try to figure out what our priorities are. Um, also wanted to bring up, uh, the question of Elkhorn. So I know we've talked before about the changing, uh, demographics within the district, um, predominantly moving more and more towards the city than it is towards Richmond, and being able to keep Elkhorn as a viable elementary building, enough students going there warrant having that building open. So one of the things we've talked about is once Lewis is open, is having the boundary lines moved, to have some more kids move towards Elkhorn. And then we talked about possibly carving out, uh, Crystal Lakes and saying not just one side of it, but maybe both sides, or neighborhoods around in there. Uh, that's something, if we were to do that, that's something we would want to do before Lewis opens up, because it's gonna open up mid-year. So if we wanted to have any kind of boundary line movements at all, we probably want to do it for August, so we probably want to start that process now and talk to people, engage in the community. So I just wanted to see, is that something you, if it's a non-starter, be like, I don't want to do that at all, I don't care, then I won't, I'll waste the time and energy.
Well, I think we need to equalize all three elementary schools the best we can. So I mean, if it's moving, Elkhorn's west and Lewis's east.
Opposite.
Yeah. Right.
Lewis's east?
North. North.
North. You guys shared with both wests.
Yes.
Both wests, sorry.
Yes.
Um, to kind of equalize and make sure we're not overcrowding Cornerstone, and I think that's something we need to start looking at.
Yeah, I think that.
Sooner than later, because eventually, we're gonna have one school that's packed and others that have small, you know, uneven students, so, yeah.
Well, I don't think there'll be much community resistance if you know, there's a wonderful school and everybody likes it. Sometimes those things are contentious because people perceive the difference, but I think.
Essentially, gonna be all three new schools.
Yeah, there are gonna be new schools basically.
Right. No one's gonna suffer from a great building environment, right?
What's your feedback on that data? About the moving, what was the feedback on that against?
So we had a community survey, and they reported back, I, I want to say it was over 80% in support of equalizing those things out. So we have asked, we have, but I'll tell you, it's always a contentious issue within communities, and make no mistake about it, not everyone will be happy with where the line is drawn, or who goes where, how we do that. We can deal with those issues when we go there, but for the long haul, it's important for us to make sure that we create equity amongst all of our elevens, and that we do so in a way that's good for the long haul for everyone. Not, it's always just gonna be that one house, or that one family, or that one farm. We've gotta be really careful about just doing, hey, here's the right thing, here's where we're at.
Well, if we can take pressure off our two large buildings, Elkhorn's a wonderful facility, we don't want it empty.
Correct.
Because at some point, if we don't change boundaries, there are kids there, it's not, you know, and we just redid that building, it's like a brand-new building, that'd be terrible. So I don't think.
Well, they've made it very clear that they have no desire to get rid of Elkhorn.
Correct.
I mean, they've made it very, very clear about that, and, yeah, just like. To add on to what Troy was just saying, I mean, they.
But if we don't have kids there.
Right, exactly. We can't, we keep, the amount of money that we put into it, plus the FEMA shelter.
Well, what you don't want to get to is where you have 13 kids in a class, and then your other classes have 27 or 28. I mean, that's a difficult, so we just want to move forward with that. I just wanted to bring that up. If that's something that the board's interested in, we'll put that on an open agenda item and actually come up with some subsequent information, some votes on how to move forward. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that was on the agenda coming up. Um, I have some pictures here. Did you guys have, you had a chance to see Lewis lately or see some of them? And I just got these pictures in, so kind of shared some of those. Uh, they're gonna start putting up the walls to the gym, uh, on Monday, so you'll see a lot of difference out at Lewis on Monday, so we're excited about that. And really excited to see what it looks like when we come back from break, much progress they've made, so it's, it's going really well. That's all I had, sir.
All right. Any questions on those topics? All right. Thank you. Moving right along to discussion items. Number one is approval of 2425 school year, Dr. Miller.
So this calendar was a little interesting for me to create, and that the entire school calendar is created for the sole purpose of moving into a school in the middle of the year. It was different. So, um, really, this is the Lewis school calendar. Um, as you can see, the biggest change, which was in, we, we met with the calendar committee, the district leadership team, showed them two versions of them, but really, when you're taking three weeks off at Christmas time, there's not a lot you can do with the calendar. I mean, there just isn't. There were very few things, there just aren't a lot of options. Um, as you know, the state sets, you know, there's a lot of rules, how many hours, when you can start, when you, you know, nobody wants to go past Labor Day, so squishing everything together and making sure that you can produce a calendar that fits all of the needs. Um, this is ultimately what the district leadership team chose. Um, they went back and talked to their buildings. Um, it was unanimous feedback that they wanted this one. One of the main differences, obviously, um, parents are going to love this, they will have their kids at home for three weeks, which is fantastic. Um, I think that it's just, it's so, yeah, it's a perfect time to appreciate your teachers next year, you know? I feel like teacher appreciation will go up. Um, notice that there are two professional development days at the end of Christmas break, that's by design as well. The first Thursday PD day, typically, we only have one of those days for teachers to do professional learning. The Thursday before, um, I had a conversation with the administrators in the other buildings, um, and I said, you know, I always, I, I give them what I think would be a really good idea, and they agree with me, so whether they actually agree with me or whether it was my idea, I think they agree with me. But, um, we're gonna dedicate that day, everyone's gonna chip in and get Lewis ready. So every building is going to give up their people, I'll come up with some kind of a rotation. Uh, I'm talking people to create bulletin boards. I mean, it's more, it takes a lot to make a school look like a school that a lot of people take for granted, um, just hanging things up in a classroom. Um, I know Dr. Tomlinson says, it's really easy, you just move your personal things, but there's a lot more that goes into it.
Is that it?
No, there's a lot more that goes into it. So it's kind of a, it'll be a really cool opportunity for our district to come together and really support Lewis. Um, I know, they're, they're doing a great job in the trailers, um, they're looking forward to this move, so I'm excited for them to get there. Um, the same amount of professional development days, um, another big change is because of the days, we did, um, shortened parent-teacher conferences from a secondary level and from, um, one of the things that COVID really put us through was the, it's almost best practice now that a lot of our parent-teacher conferences are done via Zoom. Um, so I don't know that we necessarily need two days anymore like we did before. So now it's just from one to seven for all buildings. I'll be, honestly, at the secondary level, two days of, of parent-teacher conferences was just a complete waste of time. Um, so both of those are down to one day, um, and we shortened the day before Christmas break, and the last day of school are typically half-days, and those are now full days. Um, the teachers are not going to like that, the kids go a little crazy, but we can get through two, two full days on those. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm usually, I, I give and take a little bit, but I make sure that the professional development days are spread throughout the calendar year. I think me complaining about it for a solid year to Dr. Tomlinson is how I was given this job in the first place. Um, so that's a priority for me, is to make an academic calendar. Um, I'm happy with this. Like I said, there's just not a lot you can do when you have three weeks off for Christmas break. So I'm actually looking for a motion to adopt the new calendar.
So, you have the first by Troy?
Second.
Second by Jill. Any questions?
Oh, so recently, last year, so we've switched from like hourly days to like full days, half-days. Does that hinder us or helping us in this aspect of what it means?
Are you asking if going from half-days to full-days?
No, I mean, so how we track, like, we track by like our day.
All of the hours are accounted for, not, I have, everybody, it's like Santa's List, they check it twice before I ever bring it to you guys. All of the hours are in place, all of the days are in place, um, there's all of the state rules and guidelines that they have in place. they have in place. I learned those the hard way by breaking them a couple of times. And Jared was like, you can't do that. That's against the law. And I was like, okay. So yes, everything is kosher and it's great.
Are we still counting minutes or they come back in days?
It's actually hours. It's actually hours. And we actually, we have some time built in there for some wiggle room. I'm assuming that next year we'll have the opportunity to use our AMI days, which is a huge bonus to us now that we're one-on-one with kids. So we'll have actually some built-in time wiggle room for some light starts, things like that, which is always a nice cushion to have on top of your AMI days.
Any other questions? Eric and then all those in favor? Next up is approval of committee to assess a four-day school.
I just wanted to kind of report, we've had a couple of meetings with our district leadership team. That's comprised of different teachers, classified staff represented from all over the district. So we have over 20 members on the team. We've had two different meetings already this semester and mostly to talk about salary and benefits and what are they looking for? What is it? So we worked through a lot of those issues. But the number one question we got from the committee was, have we looked at a four-day week and are we going to look at a four-day week? And that was every single building. And so I felt that it was the right time to bring it to the board's attention that this is probably one of the biggest questions we get asked in Central Office. And what I wanted to do is again, kind of like with before is if that's something that we want to at least investigate and to make a determination of whether it's even feasible in the future, this is probably the time to try to do that. And if you have no interest in it whatsoever, then let's make that decision now and we can put it to bed and move forward. But it's, it's probably the most question I get asked more than any other from our staff is have we looked at a four-day week? If not, why not? Are we doing it? Are we not doing it? When are we doing it? Like, I'm sorry, we don't have anything right now. So what we wanted to do is, is actually come up with a decision on, do you want to commission a committee within the district to investigate it and report that back to the board on pros, cons? Want to do it? Don't want to do it? They can give us, at least give us the facts and you can make an informed decision. If you don't want to go through that exercise, I just need a, I'd actually need a vote from the board if there was going to be a, if we're going to convene a committee to report back to the board on this.
I think it's a horrible idea. Why not? I have no desire to go to four days. So I think it would hinder us more than it would do any good at all. But if they're asking about it, I have no problem looking into it. But it's going to take a lot to sway me. I can pay that much.
Yeah.
I have no problem if they're wondering, the pros and cons, honestly, getting more information about it. But I think it's a horrible idea.
At some point, the pressure is, it's going to be an creeping issue.
Hey, Troy, could you use your mic? I can't hear you.
I just said, Derek, I think it's not a good, I think that pedagogically it's not a very good idea. But I think that if every district around us eventually is headed that way. Have you heard, what has Independence's situation developed? Have they talked about it or have you heard from them or anything?
Yeah.
They're in the semester end. I mean, they should know that that even has to be involved.
They haven't so far. So, but it is new for that. The late term is probably the more, the closer, they were the first one to go to it.
Late terms then it's.
I think it's late term. I don't know if Plasworth's going to it.
Yeah, I think they're on Mondays.
Are they? So again, it's, it's a very prevalent topic. It comes up a lot. I can tell you that we have lost some staff this year to ORIC who just went to a four-day week and they went there just because of the schedule. You know, it's, it is impacting our hiring and it is impacting our retention. My advice to the board would be if you have every representative from every aspect of the district asking for at least this, I would highly recommend that we at least convene a committee to look into it so that we can, we're responsive to our staff's request. They, they at least need to know that we took it serious, that we've looked at it, went through the pros and cons. And then we can make a decision based on what's best for the school. But I think you at least at a minimum have to respect their wishes to be able to speak to it.
I'd be interested to, when they do research, like some data about students as far as their basic needs being met when they're out of school on that day. That, that's a huge concern for me is student supervision. You know, a lot of students, you know, come to school because they know they're going to eat breakfast and lunch. And, you know, sometimes kids go hungry over the weekend even if they don't realize that. So it's more about student safety and, plus, you know, achievement too. Because I know, I've worked at a couple of buildings that did modified calendar where their first day was mid-June. And so they started earlier than the rest of the buildings in their district. And now that's going away next year because there wasn't enough data to support that and keeping it in place. I think you have to be very careful if you consider something like this. But I do agree that if staff are wanting to know more, we owe it to do a thorough investigation of it and look at everything. Because another thing I think about is like the career center. You have different schools sending students, you're going to be on different calendars. But it's, I mean, there's a lot of pieces that could fit in place with that. So.
Yeah. In a world where we're trying to get, push kids to be in school more, I can't, I just can't see it. But I understand getting, getting more informed, but there's just not data. Like I just, so.
I am interested in hearing from people that are gathering the data and I would love to see a committee.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion.
To approve the formation of a committee?
To approve the formation of a committee to look at before day.
So we have a first to investigate.
This is just for a committee. That's all I think we're doing.
Second. Jill's the second, Caitlin's first, Jill's second. Any other discussion? And all those in favor?
I think it's fair.
G3.
Yes.
Sorry Lisa, I almost missed it. This is just a discussion because we can't set the date yet, but we need to discuss a special meeting to discuss our audit. Dr. Tomlinson.
Yes, sir.
So is that all we need to do Lisa? Just say that we're going to set a meeting at a later date?
Typically, you can take the motion and you do it by a, by a motion.
But even if we don't know the date yet, just an approval to set a date to be determined? Because we don't know when we'll have the audit. Okay, so an entertaining motion to set a special board meeting to be determined to go over the audit must be finalized in the month of December.
Yeah, once the whisper finishes it, we'll know. Hopefully we can get it at the end of this week or the first next week before school's out. But statute of law, we have to have it done by the end of the year. So they're not done. So I don't know how else to do it other than just.
We can predict we'll be doing something for the, like the last couple of days of December.
Well, we'd like to do it next week.
And it would be, we'll do it by December.
And as long as we post it properly and everything else, but we just want to make sure.
Motion. Eric first, Aaron's first, that's second. Caitlin's second. All those in favor?
It is, but I mean, until I get it in my hands, but the sooner the better.
All right. That is all that's on the agenda. Entertained a motion to adjourn December. First by Troy. But you two at the same time.
Team ahead.
Roach and goat.
Second by Jill. All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Have a good night. I don't see anybody. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Stay out of the papers. That's a police platter and everything else.
The holidays.